This is a selectmen's meeting for October 1st, 2009. First order of business, salute to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda.
Make a motion to move meet with the gym committee to number one so that small children can go home and go to bed in order to go to school tomorrow morning.
And also, we have to add the number 10, which is outdoor lighting for the town hall.
It's what?
Outdoor.
Outdoor lighting for the town hall.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting as written.
Second.
All in favor. Signing of the warrants.
Did you take my pen? Yes, you did.
This is the one I took from my desk.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I sit down.
You're gonna need a pen, they can just share.
You're always taking my pens.
Somebody's stealing pens.
Marissa took your pen.
I gave her my pen.
Not start rumors.
So that is my pen.
This was on my desk.
I believe that they actually belong to the taxpayers.
I'd like to remind everyone, if you wish to speak this evening, please come up to the podium, as we are being televised on cable TV, and we need to be at the microphone, please.
Where do you go anymore? I would like to make one little announcement, just so people know that we have a new cameraman tonight, Mr. Andrew, called Leandro, and this is his first time, so we're very glad to have you here, Andrew.
Okay, under all business, a cable committee update. Do we have one?
Yes, we wanted to let everybody know that we had our meeting last Saturday, and we adjusted the audio and the lighting, and we're gonna see if it works. We've got a couple of tapes that we're gonna be working on to see if it is adjusted, and we'll find out, we'll put it on the air, which you'll know, but that's all we have.
Thank you. Road committee update. There is no update, there's no update, it's okay. It just shows you haven't done anything for the last week.
Yeah. The only update is Monday, Jack and Cindy and I are driving to Augusta to pick up five brand-new counters, and we'll be setting them up on what we think are the busiest roads in Acton for two weeks, period.
And what does that information do? Where does it go?
That's gonna go back into the road surface management system, that's the two criteria I told you that we needed to put in, and it will tell us the most heavily traveled roads and the most important roads in Acton. So, that'll be all done by October 18th.
Thank you.
And that means an Augusta plan?
Yes.
That'll help prioritize on a five-year plan that hopefully we'll end up with before the winter's over on a maintenance plan.
Okay. Going on to new business, we've moved meeting with the gym committee to number one, so we've asked the gym committee to come in. Is the whole gym committee here tonight?
Not the whole.
No, not the whole, not everybody. Just, would you, you're the chair of the gym committee, Sherri Smith, just to have a report or an update on your activity and what's going on with your committee.
Well, basically, we met a few times, trying to decide if it was feasible to keep the gym open for us to be able to raise some sort of money to fix the things that you wanted fixed, and we've determined that with the limited membership we would end up with, with just fire, rescue, and auxiliary, that we would not be able to afford to do those kind of changes that you wanted. So, our plan is to move the fitness equipment back to the fire department and at some point, hopefully, build a new building to house that and have our good gym for that.
You made a decision to only have fire and rescue?
That's what you guys had said you wanted. It was just gonna be for, you wanted to limit it back to just fire, rescue, and auxiliary, which was the way we had started it.
I, did we make that decision?
Well, that's one.
That was the conversation that we had had, yes.
We discussed it, but I don't think we made it, I mean, we didn't make any decision. We were waiting for your input, and also, it wouldn't even be enough to fix those code violations to open it again, or...
What's that?
There wasn't enough activity to even fix the code violations to get going, and the rest of the stuff was all long-term. You know, we had planned to put some maintenance money from, see, basically, it's a town building as well, and we're responsible for that building, so we had plans after hearing your report of putting so much money into siding, at least the first thing was to try to put siding on there to help insulate it.
But before you can side it, you wanted ventilation and windows in there, and we can't afford to do that before you side it.
Right, but that's all.
You wouldn't wanna side it first and then cut it open and put windows in.
Well, it's all long, all that other stuff was all long-term, you know, just we wanted to make sure you understood everything, but it's kind of, I'm not really, kinda disappointed. I don't, I mean, that's not what, we haven't even met with the committee at all yet to discuss it with everybody. That's what we kinda were trying to find out tonight.
Okay, well, we can certainly set up a meeting.
That would be good.
With the full gym committee.
That would be good.
Do you want it at a selectmen's meeting, or do you want it, I mean, basically, we were just told to be here, we didn't realize what it was that you wanted.
Well, we just, you know, when we have committees, especially new ones that we put together, we like to get reports and find out what's going on so we can...
Well, that's basically the point, we can't, if we go back to just being fire, rescue, and auxiliary, we can't afford to do the changes that you want. You know, if we wanna talk about opening it up back up to the teachers and, you know, some of the other ideas that we had, such as municipal employees that live in the town, all the committees, the whole point of the gym was for the community. It was originally started as fire, rescue, and auxiliary because it was an assistance to firefighters grant. At some point, it got opened up to municipal employees, which at first I was kinda, I don't know, and then I thought it was a really good idea. And then, when we started talking about this, I thought, well, if we could open it up to people who volunteer in the town, the road committee, the planning board, the warrant and finance committee, you know, if all those people could join and we all paid a small membership, we could afford to keep it running and keep it, and to do the sort of things that would need to be done to make it a better place.
Well, that's what we need, that's what we need to hear.
Sherri, did you?
But I told you that, that we couldn't do it on just the fire, rescue, and auxiliary.
Could, did you, did you have a, did you guys get a price, approximate price on what it would cost to fix the code violations?
I don't know how much the siding would be, but as far as...
No, that wasn't part of the code, the code violations that Kenny gave us.
Yeah, he had, the things that he had told me about were probably only a thousand to two thousand dollars. We had a donation of an oil tank that we could have replaced.
See, I think there's a miscommunication here, because we had informal discussions, you know, we haven't had anything formal, but just to go, I just wanna restate one thing about, because there's been some crazy letters circulating around about Dennis Long trying to shut the gym down, and I thought this was a good time to talk about that. This originally started with, when I was a selectman with Mr. Conway and Nancy Rumor, and I was one of the original selectmen, even before that, that we signed this to have this done. But the problem was, I, we went in there, myself and Nancy Rumor went in there, and we inspected it, and it was, wasn't being maintained. And we found out at that time that there was really no one in charge of it, it just slipped through the cracks, whatever happened, it wasn't, so we had made some inquiries on different people using it, and it didn't change. There was nobody cleaning it, there was some violations in there and dangerous, there was things that were not finished, so we took a little bit more action. Dennis Long didn't come into this, this is just for the public to know because of a bad letter going around.
I know that.
Until later, and he brought his expertise as a maintenance man into it, but this was pretty much my doing with Mr. Conway and Nancy Rumor. So, we're just trying to get to the bottom of this and get it fixed up and get it, you know, maybe we had some misunderstanding in the informal discussions we had, but we have long-term plans that we like to do in the short term, you know, and of course, if it can work out with your recommendations to who should use it and how it's set up with the fees and everything else, that's great, that's what we need you for. So, maybe we could get a meeting together.
Okay.
You wanna do it at a selectmen's meeting?
I think it's a good idea.
Why don't we do it not next week, because we have a public hearing following, so we need to have next week be a shorter meeting, but what if we were to do it on the 15th?
Okay, you guys okay with that, 15th? Tracy? No, Tracy. October 15th for a meeting?
I guess I'm confused, 'cause I spent most of the month of August with the committee, and I believe it's already been presented to the selectmen, our plan. We came up with a contract that we are gonna have members donate fifty dollars in order for us to be able to support the heating cost. This was all presented to you based on...
Well, no, nothing was presented, that's why we called you here, nothing has ever been presented to the selectmen, not a thing.
So, okay, so then, all of our meetings were based on this list that the code enforcement officer came up with, we came up with a plan of how we're gonna take care of all those things, and then all of a sudden, there was a visit down at the building, and all of a sudden, there's two or three more things wrong. So, I don't, when is it gonna stop, I guess, and what are we responsible for before we can actually continue with this?
There hasn't been any visits since Kenny Paul's been down there and found more things that I know of.
No, when we went down.
Oh, we did an informal walkthrough with Sherri, but that wasn't any official, nothing official was said, we were just explaining to her all the things that had to be done,
So, this meeting that's taking place October 15th, who's gonna be there?
Can we get a copy of the work that you guys did in August, maybe Sherri, but tomorrow, and then we can read through your proposals, and so if you guys are here as a gym committee, and we're here, and if you'd like, Ken Paul could be here, we could ask him to join us.
Before we meet as a gym committee, I wanna know every single thing that has to be fixed in that building, I don't wanna find out later that there's something else, because that's what happened. We came up with a plan for everything, we got the oil tank donated, we got a surveillance camera donated, I wrote, drew up a contract, Sherri edited it, and now all of a sudden, I feel like it's...
That's the first time, first time I've heard of it, first time I've heard of this tonight.
So, I just wanna make sure that...
Can I hold on one second? I want you to understand, it's the first time we've heard of this tonight, and we, and what we do as the selectmen, we must discuss everything in public, so nothing's official until it's discussed in public.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure before we meet on the 15th, every single thing that needs to be fixed in that building, so we can decide if it's feasible or not, and if it's just gonna...
You already have that, you already have that list, Mrs. Kelly.
The rest of it, yeah, something...
The list that we got, and then the additions that were made, were a lot more money than the original list that we got.
So, maybe on the 15th...
Something about the foundation, the building's gonna have to be moved because it's sinking into the ground?
You get, you get some misinformation.
This is completely different from anything to do with the building being open to be used. The list that was given to the committee by Kenny Paul was all safety issues, it was all code violations. The other things were, okay, this is what we have to look at down the road, okay? We have to do this, we have to do, put siding on the building, we gotta put an air exchange system in the thing, the foundation needs to be dug out on the front side and see what the problem is down there. This is all stuff down the road. To open that building, I mean, this is supposed to be a health center, basically.
Right.
Okay? To go into a building that is not only not safe, but unhealthy, to me is kinda counterproductive. So, all we wanted to do, these are the issues that Kenny Paul came up with, and when Nancy and Tony went down, the place was a mess, there was rubbish everywhere, things were dirty, the bathroom was dirty, and at the time, they asked Kenny Paul to go down and do an inspection of the building, see code violations. He came back with that set of code violations, we talked to Sherri about it, then we says, well, these are some of the things, let's take a walk down and look the place over. So, we went down, we looked the place over, showed her all the code violations, and nobody else knew about the front of the foundation there, I spotted that myself, and this has to be looked at, okay? People in this community have complained for years, the way that building looks, all right? It needs something done to it, so it's not a disgrace to the town of Acton, the exterior of it. Part of the ventilation in there also is you need some windows in the done place. These are all things that are long-term, it's got nothing to do with reopening this building.
Okay.
And whatever you were told, or whatever the rumors are out there, or whatever the letters are out there, has nothing to do with these selectmen from what we asked the committee to do.
I just don't understand why it's taken so long from when we've been told to now, I guess, and also, who's gonna make the final decision of who can utilize the gym? The committee or you?
The selectmen do.
We make the final decision, but we absolutely are looking for your recommendation, and I'm sure it's this, in our discussions, we'd like to see as many people be able to use it as possible. We also are looking at using some maintenance money, we have a, you know, maintenance account for the buildings to, we were looking, hopefully, we can squeeze out, put in the siding on so we can pay for that, 'cause it is a town building. We wanna work on this together, just, I don't know why, there's just no communication, so...
We've just been waiting for a report from the committee, that's all we've been waiting for.
Appreciate your input, we'll, you know, let's work together on it, we wanna work together on it, and we need, we have so many things we have to deal with, that each committee that reports to us helps us make decisions, and it would be a very large weight on what you guys say, of course.
So, on the 15th, you guys, so tomorrow, we'll get the proposals that you guys worked on in August, and then on the 15th, if you bring the list with you, we can make sure that it's very clear, you know, what was Ken Paul's that needs to be done to reopen, and what are long-term things, and so that everyone is very clear onto which are which, and then we can move forward. Does that sound fair?
Thank you. Okay. We have Sheriff Olet, that you would like to speak tonight, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. I sent out a letter to the 14 towns that the sheriff's office is responsible for, for patrolling, as a result of some layoffs that occurred at the county on September 14th. It's my understanding that some of my officers were here a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Officer Thistle, I think it was, was here.
Those officers were part of the labor union that were going around, which I think is a good idea, so you got an opportunity to talk with them. I think some of it, they wanted to let the towns know that, what some of the issues were as far as the collective bargaining agreement goes. The reason, the reason I'm here tonight is, is I wanted to make myself available to the selectmen to answer any questions, operational questions that you might have, as a result of what has transpired since the 14th with the layoffs, and that's why I'm here tonight, I wanna answer those questions, if you have any, and the other reason I'm here is, obviously, when something like this transpires, there's a lot of information out there, some of it is valid, some of it is invalid, and some of it is plain rumor. So, I figured if I came, you know, the buck stops here, and you folks can ask me the questions, and I'll answer them to the best of my ability, and if I don't have the answer, I'll certainly get it for you, but that's the main reason I'm here this evening. So, you know, we can do it one or two ways, if you have questions, you know, I'll answer them now, or if you want me to give you kind of a synopsis of where we are, I can do that, whatever pleases the board.
I think that one of the biggest concerns of the public is how is this going to affect call time in an emergency, and how does this affect investigational type of things, you know, as well?
Okay, and that's a fair question. When you take a third of somebody's patrol force out, there are gonna be some consequences, and the first thing I want everyone to realize is, I'm not here to sugarcoat anything, or I'm not here to make things worse or better, or whatever, I'm here to answer questions and as candid as I can. One of the things that we have had to do since this is we have to reallocate the manpower. One of the things that we had to do prior to the layoffs, I had five detectives that did criminal investigations, and I might say probably five of the finest investigators in the state, because last year, our clearance rate of crimes reported to us was 41%. The state overall average of all agencies was 20.8%, I think it was. We were the highest sheriff's office in the state, and, you know, we were forty, almost 41%, which I'm very proud of, and we had a good group of guys. Unfortunately, the main thrust that we had to look at is response to emergency calls, so we had to take some detectives out, put them in uniform, and put them on the road. So consequently, as we speak tonight, I'm down to three detectives. So, that's, that's one of the things that happened as a result of this. The other thing that has happened is the amount of manpower per shift. We're responsible for 14 towns, 585 square miles, about 47,000 people, and in the summertime, about 70,000 people, and we have on the road currently 11 people to cover three shifts, 24/7, 365. So, unfortunately, what's happened is we've had to cut back on the size of the patrol, and we have to, we have to take a look at each call that comes in and prioritize what we're gonna answer. Obviously, the emergency calls are the ones that we're the most concerned with, domestic calls, aggravated assaults, burglaries in progress, so on and so forth, we'll respond to those as quickly and expeditiously as we can. A lot of the other calls, we're gonna have to stack those calls, and we're gonna have to answer them as time allows. Not to say that someone's call isn't important, because it is, it's important primarily to that person, and it's important to us too, but the numbers just don't, don't match up because we covered a little over 20,000 calls last year with those additional seven people, and I don't see those calls for service lowering, so...
Another question at this point is, that people have been asking, how does the mutual aid, or if there is any, help you, being that your department has been cut down, the state police, or say that we have the town of Sanford, or even in New Hampshire, we have Milton, which have forces, is that something that may help?
Ironically, the week before the layoffs, I got a, an email from the troop commander in Alfred. They have issues just like we have, the state has issues, worse issues than we have. They were, they were experiencing a shorthandedness of personnel, a couple people out on sick leave, one person out on extended family leave, they have one person at the academy, and one of the things that the troop commander was asking me about was to get together and see what we were gonna do about the laid-out shift. Before I ever got a chance to talk with him about his request, my whole world came tumbling down on the 14th of September. So, I called him that afternoon, the next morning, we got together. We still have the call sharing agreement that we've had for the last three years, three and a half, four years, whatever it is, but we've had to make some changes to that. We still do the three zones as we have all along, we cover two of them, and the state police cover one per month, and then we rotate. The only difference that we did do, one of the differences, in our, what we call our B-zone, which is kind of the central part of the county, B-zone includes the town of Waterboro and the town of Arundel. Those two towns have contracts with us, we have extra deputies there that the town pays for. One of the biggest problems that we had was scheduling with the state with those two contract towns, because one of the, one of the nice things about having a contract deputy is you, you work with the public safety committee and with the selectmen, and if you have a certain issue in town that needs taking care of at a certain time, you pull that deputy and work on that shift, or you can split a shift, you might need him four hours in the morning, four hours at night, whatever the situation may be. One of the toughest things we had going is when the state had that B-zone, when the contract deputy was working, they wouldn't cover it, we would, but then when he, he wasn't working, then they'd come back in, but what made it tough was, if the town wanted the deputy working at a certain time, it was almost a nightmare trying to figure out how to, how to get that all scheduled up. So, one of the things that we did do is, we're gonna handle the B-zone all the time because of the contracts also, so the center part of the county will handle, and we'll rotate the A-zone and the C-zone with them every month like we have in the past. Now, they being down manpower also, had to reduce some of their shifts also manpower-wise as we had to, but we continue to talk back and forth as to, you know, can I help you with this, or can you help me with that? Because a lot of times, you know, schedules are great on paper until you have somebody that's out sick, you have somebody that gets called to court, you get somebody that's called to a DMV hearing, and all of a sudden, you're down to one person for the, for the whole area. So, we're continually talking to them, and they're talking with us to try to fill in the holes. So, that's what we've done in this particular case. Is it, is it a perfect solution? No, it isn't. It's probably a Band-Aid approach right now. I'm hoping that when he starts to get some people back, and hopefully, I get some people back, we'll be able to go back to the way we were doing it a little bit, you know, a little more than we are right now, but currently, that's, that's what we have going on with that. The town of Sanford is very gracious, and when we ask them for a backup, especially on a domestic or something, they're there, but they have their responsibilities to their town. But, you know, any good police officer will come to the aid of another police officer, and you forget the boundaries, but, you know, you really, you really have to take a look at, you know, who pays the salaries over there compared to who pays the salaries here. And while we're talking about that, that's always been one of the issues that's been the toughest to get, get your hands around, is how services are paid for. And, you know, I mean, I can remember when I was a state trooper, you know, hearing the same thing of, well, gee, the big towns support the small towns, and that still goes on today. And how we get to that, I think it takes legislation and some good debate as to how that's done, but for the time being, that's what we're doing, that's how we're handling it, and, you know, there are going to be some times where people are gonna have to wait for us to respond to a certain call, because there're just not that many people around. I really, I really don't like to get involved too much in discussing in public what, what the schedules are and what the manpower amounts are and everything, I think it's a little dangerous thing to do that, but one can imagine if a third of your force gets pulled out from under you, you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose some coverage. I will say that during this whole thing, the, the officers that work for me have been phenomenal as to how they've handled this, because we've gone back to their contract, and we've had to do a lot of changes in their work contract, and they've been, they've been more than gracious to, to change some of that stuff, because they know that it's their job to protect the folks out here, and they're trying to do everything they can, as I am. So, that's, I hope that answered, you know, that particular question, but I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that I answer everyone's question, because, you know, if there's a question left unanswered, then there's always the opportunity for a rumor or something like that, so, yes.
You mentioned that you were in hopes of having some force returned to you, how do you see that happening?
Well, fortunately, today, I brought one person back. I have, I have an individual that's out on a medical issue right now, so I was able to talk to the county and get the authority to bring them back, because the person that's out on that medical issue right now is on short-term disability, which is an insurance, so we're not expending those funds, so I went after that and brought a healthy person back today, so, but I'm still short because that other person is out, but at least we've maintained status quo there. The other thing, I was just awarded a grant, it was announced, I believe, day before yesterday from Shelley Pingree's office. I had applied for a grant a little over a year ago for a position for crimes against persons. It comes under the Office of Justice Assistance, it's a federal grant, has to do with violence against women. We have, we have... We have a grant for domestic violence investigator. This would supplement that with criminal threatening, harassment, telephone harassment, checking for bail conditions, checking for protection from abuse orders, anything to do with crimes against a person as it pertains to that. So, that's been awarded. When that paperwork comes through, we should be able to bring another person back. That will be a detective's position, because that's what the grant was written for. However, we'll do that internal swap with people from within side, then I can bring a person in to replace that one using that grant money. So, those are a couple of things that I'm looking at right now. We had a contract with SAD 57 for a school resource officer. One of the officers that was laid off was the school resource officer, because our contract, you lay off by seniority. So, he was one of them that got laid off. I'm working with the school right now, and I should have the information that I need by the first and next week. The next thing I need to do that is very, very important is to get an officer back in that school, because we have, what, 1,500 kids in that one location? And trying to respond to calls at the school with the amount of manpower I have on the street, it just saps you, because always something going on in there. So, we're going to make the attempt to try to get that person back into the school. It doesn't help me manpower-wise, per se, on the road, but it does relieve the pressure that is on the people on the road that have to respond to the school. Today, for instance, three different times, at two different schools in SAD 57, we were in there. Valid complaints, it's a little city by itself, there's 1,500 people that we're responsible for. So, that's one of the other things that we're going to be looking at. And the last thing, I met with the finance director the other day. One of, because the county is self-insured, and one of the reasons that they laid off so many people, and of course, I talk about deputy sheriffs, but I'm also talking about the entire county, because, I mean, there are a lot of other folks that lost their jobs that have very important jobs in the county. But one of the reasons they had to go after so many people, they had to keep in mind, if all of these people went on unemployment, then for every person that you lay off, you have to lay another person off, or a partial person, to make up the difference, because of the unemployment benefits that you have to pay. That was done in the anticipation that they were going to have to pay 48 weeks of unemployment. After they did the massive layoff, somebody decided to check with the Department of Labor, and they found out that once they extended the unemployment, that the federal government, through the stimulus package, is paying for a good portion of that. So, now, they're kind of in a retreat form, and what I'm hoping is, and that's why I went directly to the finance director, I'm hoping that now that we don't have to pay as much, that'll save quite a bit of money. The other thing is several of the officers that have been laid off have already been picked up by other police departments and are working full-time. So, we won't be paying any benefits, you know, on those individuals. So, if there's any way I can get some of those people back, I mean, that's to the forefront that I'm trying to do right now. I'm a realist. We're not going to get the seven back until we do the budget process for next year, because they're obviously, they're looking to save the money going into next year and see where the budget takes us. But that's going to be the other stimulus that's going to drive this thing, is what the budget process is going to look like next year.
May I ask if anybody in the public would like to ask the sheriff a question about this issue? I think it was a pretty thorough explanation.
It is what it is.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming down.
And if you have any other questions, please feel free to call me at the office, and I'd be more than happy to provide that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, did we have some, did you want to speak this evening? Okay, we told you you could speak this week, so come on in. It's on the same issue?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Rachel Sherman, and I'm the president of MSEA Local 1297, which is the Clerical and Maintenance Workers. About two weeks before the layoffs, we had circulated a memorandum about some cost-savings ideas that we had, not necessarily for us to discuss alone, but for everybody to discuss, all the citizens of York County. And I believe, did you receive a copy?
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure that if anybody else would like a copy. The purpose of it was to open up discussion, to maybe discuss different ideas that people maybe hadn't explored, because basically, as the sheriff had said, everything has pretty much been a Band-Aid. The employees have been giving concessions for several years now, and this year is no exception. We certainly, both the County Patrol Association and the MSEA employees have offered things, and unfortunately, they may not be enough. And that's basically the communication that we've received, is that it wasn't enough. But what we want to focus on, of course, is the services that have been, basically, they've ground to a halt. York County employees have always prided themselves in this level of service that they've been able to provide. I know with the Registry of Deeds, they went from 11 people down to four. And so, they're not able to service, you know, the mechanics and the plumbers and the electricians when they come in to do their mechanics' liens. A lot of people don't understand the various services that are offered in these departments. When you mention probate, they think about, well, somebody died. But that's not the only thing that they do. They take care of adoptions, they take care of the emergency guardianships, if someone becomes ill, or if there's a child that needs guardianship. Those are things that they take care of, and sometimes, those things need to be done in short order, and that they just don't have the time or the resources. The employees, I can assure you, are all professional and are trying to do their best to be sure that things get done as quickly as they can humanly do. So, the goal in this memorandum was to try to focus on how we can continue to provide those services. And we just wanted everybody to know that the employees are certainly willing to do the work that needs to be done.
What can the public do? I mean, the county seems to be like an offset form of government. It's not direct, like, you know, the Act and Selectmen are here, people can come and talk to us, we have our governor, we have all our different levels. But the county's kind of a different type of an operation. How can people, or what is the best way that they can help this, and who do they contact to help this situation?
Okay, there are several ways, actually. We have the budget process that the sheriff had mentioned that is up and coming. October 14th, there's a budget caucus, and there are certain members for their positions for the public and for elected officials. And I believe, pretty much for each district, and you would be in District 1, and I believe it may be an elected official that you need to find. And it would have to be from a town that does not already have representation. You have Chip Vennel, I believe.
We have Chip, yes.
Yes, yeah. So, you would need to find somebody and support that person, and you as elected officials could. But I would suggest contacting John Sylvester, who is last year's chair of the Budget Committee, and he's pretty much going to be running the caucus for this year. It's 7:00 PM at the Alfred Superior Courthouse, and I would contact him. He's an Alfred Selectman, and you may be aware.
Oh, John, yeah.
Some other things are, people, in the past, there's been an ad hoc committee about two years ago. They came up with some ideas for the county as far as maybe, I think, one of them was develop a five-year plan, and just some different things for them to work towards. And I don't think that the committee at that time had felt it was necessary to have follow-through, but if there was perhaps another committee that was to be formed, maybe that could be part of what they do, is to have a timeline, and maybe that perhaps that would help. I don't know how management would feel about my saying that, but we certainly, I mean, the employees, we've had employees that have been there for 30 years that are deeply invested in county government and believe in the services that are provided. It is a unique system in that the towns and the state don't offer those services. What else was there? Charter commission was brought up. At the 12-town group, they had mentioned perhaps forming a charter commission to develop a charter. Now, that was tried in 2002, and I don't believe that there probably wasn't enough publicity about it, nobody quite knew what it was, but it would set down the rules and guidelines.
Charter for the county.
For the county, correct. Yeah, and I believe we only had three people at the time that were interested in serving on the commission throughout the five districts. And they were all elected, unfortunately, the referendum to form the charter commission was defeated, so there was no charter commission. So, that might be something that the towns may want to look towards, you know, because I know accountability has been something that has been questioned, how do we hold them accountable? And those might be some good ideas to pursue. And I mean, those, again, those are all ideas that have come out of the memorandum that we sent around, and they're not even listed on there. So, these are just some various things.
Any questions from the public about this issue that you'd like to ask, or the selectmen have any questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Thanks. Okay. We're going on to announcing the public hearing for the General Assistant Ordinance. The public hearing will be, which we're required to have a public hearing for this, on October 8th at 6:00 PM. That's, and we're going to have this...
Meeting is at 6:00.
Our meeting is at 6:00, okay. So, it's at 6:00 PM at the regular selectmen's meeting, is the public hearing for the General Assistance Ordinance. Okay, number three will be opening bids for winter sand. We have a lot of bids. Thank you.
You're the secretary? The secretary is saying goodbye to Morris.
I have to open it now? Wow, a lot of bids. Okay. Robert Libby &amp; Sons will deliver screened sand to the town of Acton for the amount of $7.99 per cubic yard. Okay, that's one. This is Seth McCoy's Trucking and Excavating from Alfred. Screened winter sand, 3,000 yards, a 3/8ths coarse screened winter sand, delivery at 2,000 yards to Acton beginning October 12th. $8.50 a yard. Total would be $25,500. Turk's Sand and Gravel in Acton. They will supply the town of Acton with screened 3/8ths coarse winter sand, delivered to the salt shed for a cost of $6 per yard, delivery included. This is Stuart Tornow and Stuart, STS Construction. Supply and delivery of 3,000 yards, 3/8ths coarse screened winter sand to the salt shed. RW Construction in Acton. Let's see, 2,000 yards of quality screened ice control sand delivered to the salt shed with an additional 1,000 yards put up if needed. $5.80 per yard. The additional, that's for 2,000, and the additional would be the same price for additional 1,000. This is from Bernard Yet and Scott Mooney. Winter sand bid price for 3,000 yards, a 3/8ths inch coarse winter sand, 2,000 yards, delivered October 12th. This last one. Peppin Gravel. Proposal for winter sand would be for 3,000 yards, $6.40 per yard. Doesn't say if that's delivered or not, but I assume it's delivered. Doesn't say it.
That's the terms of the...
Yeah, that's the terms, okay. Any comments?
Well, I think we can take out the first two pretty easily, since they are $2 and $3 higher than the other bids.
What is our lowest bidder?
Your lowest bidder is Turk. No, excuse me, excuse me. Is RW.
RW is the lowest bidder. What is that one?
580.
580?
Is it?
Was that one lower than that?
That was Crawford, right?
RW?
RW is...
RW is 580, that's the lowest. The next one is Yet and Mooney at 594. And the next one is Turk at 6. Then Peppin at 640, and Stuart Tornow at 649. That's eliminating the top two.
To get the road commissioners' input on this, am I right to say that every one of these is the same type of sand?
Yes.
I know you have a bid in there, Scott, so maybe it's like a, I'm just asking if it's, if each one of these bids is exactly the same type of sand, to get the opinion of the road commissioners on this.
It's not the same kind of sand. I'm sure you're probably pulling out of a herd's pit.
It's just the bid process was 3/8ths coarse winter sand.
Yeah, I'm going to apologize. We had a road committee meeting, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, and prior to that, Mr. Mooney and I had spoke about doing winter sand, okay? And we both agreed that we were going to go through the two guys in town, give those guys a shot, because we thought that sand being in town, we were going to get the best price out of those guys. So, Scott was supposed to call one guy, and I was going to call the other guy. Time went by, I ended up calling the other guy anyways, and we hadn't got any prices, so I got prices from both of them. I mentioned this at the road committee meeting, and all of a sudden, because one guy's price was lower, it became an issue, we had to put it out to bid. I didn't go by protocol of how we were supposed to do this. I apologize, I have tainted the bid system. The sand that, there's, our Peppin &amp; Sons sand is good sand. We used, they used it last year, surrounding towns uses it. Turk's sand, same thing, other towns and surrounding areas use it.
So, what you're saying is there was two...
I believe it's, this bid process was screwed right off the bat from last week at the road committee.
There were two amounts per yard that were said at the road committee meeting.
Yes, there was.
That bids were put in ahead of time.
And what I had done...
That's not the way the bid process works.
What I had done, that's why I'm up here, okay? What I had done is I didn't get just two bids, I got four bids, okay? And I didn't have the other two bids at the meeting, because we decided we weren't going to bid it. And away, then, I, for some reason, didn't think we had to go through this bid process, because this spring, when we had gone and done winter, they had gone and done winter sand, put 1,000 yards up, it was supposed to be $5 a yard, ended up being, I guess, what, $6.50?
Six and a quarter.
You got it down to six and a quarter, okay? So, that price had changed. So, as far as I looked at it, that bid process just went out the window. So, I had gone and done what Scott and I had agreed to do. I gave the numbers, next thing you know, the right guy didn't have the right number, now we got to put it out to bid. Now, all of a sudden, Mr. Mooney and Mr. Waymouth, okay, come in, they already knew the numbers, okay? Now, myself, the sand that comes out of that pit down there, we used that for years, it was crap, okay? And they complained about it back then. Now, all of a sudden, it's good enough, because I'm sure that's where the sand's coming from. Now, my recommendation is either go with the Turk's or the Peppin. Now, my recommendation is either go with the Turkot or the Pepin bid. I don't believe those two, this bid process was tainted right off the bat. It's my fault. I'm apologizing right now, and this won't happen again next year.
Yes, Mr. Mooney?
Yes, Dave and I did discuss. Dave had numbers, but we all knew it had to go out the bid proposal. So the numbers that Dave discussed was, discussing numbers, the sand had to go out the bid. It did last year, it's gonna this year. So I don't believe it was tainted. The bid wasn't tainted at all. I did talk to Pepin, and I can have it verified. I asked, I said, "I do not want to know your number, because I am bidding on it also. I just want to make sure you knew that the bid was out there." And far as that sand that we got this spring, I discussed it with the selectmen, that all the prices were agreed on before we did it, because it was money that was in there from the ice storm that was to be spent in the same fiscal year. I was just trying to help the town out. Thank you.
One second, David, before you go. Pam McGlynn, could you come up here representing the road committee, please?
Yeah.
Or one of you, one of you. I have a question, but I want to ask them a question before that. Let me just ask a question. All I want to know-
I was at the road committee meeting, and when Scott came to that road committee meeting, Scott had prices as well.
So the whole, the prices were discussed-
Let Scott get confused.
What I wanted to ask you is, prices were discussed for sand publicly at a public road committee meeting?
Yes, sir, they were.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yep.
Okay.
The biggest problem I've got here is Scott and I discussed this right out in the hallway out here, right before this meeting, a week or so before this meeting, okay? And we had both agreed that we weren't gonna put it out to bid. Now, he just got up and said that, "Oh, it has to go out to bid." That's not what we discussed, okay? And I, I didn't put a bid on the winter sand, and I could have. And I was, I was gonna, but I thought it was a conflict of interest. I don't believe the road commissioners will be putting a bid on winter sand, myself. We're putting it up in the building and stuff, that's our thing. And I'd recommend to the selectmen to delete both the first two bids. I don't believe the sand's quality anyways.
We definitely have been trying to put everything out to bid. I think that's something that we're gonna be even talking about again this evening. This, I don't know what we're gonna do now, because the bid process, you know, that's not the way the bid process is supposed to be with prices known ahead of time.
Well, the bids are sealed. The prices, while they might have been discussed, they didn't have the bids ahead of time.
No.
No. Because the bids were all sealed.
And, I mean, the two prices you're gonna, you're saying it's not quality. One of the materials is coming out of Judy Brazier's pit, which the town has been taking material out of there upwards from last year for probably twelve to fourteen years. The winter sand has been coming out of Judy Brazier's pitch, which, it is a quality sand. And the other one, I believe, is coming out of Gerd and King's old pit, which Downey Shea is gonna be making the material.
Is it possible that, please forgive me for my road ignorance, okay? I will learn. Is it possible to have samples of sand? Can we see the sand blind, without names on them, just letters, and then we can look at the quality of the sand?
You can go up and get a sample from each pit. It depends what pile they want to pull it out of.
Well, can we ask for samples from the people and have them send them, and then we can look at them objectively for just quality of sand and rate them for quality?
Do you know what to look, I personally don't know what to look for.
No, we'd have to ask the two road commissioners to look at the sand. They wouldn't have the names on them, they would be labeled separately so that they would be blind samples.
What you're gonna get out of that, okay, is, you know, they can screen out the most coarse stuff you've ever seen in your life, and that's what you're gonna get for a sample, and then you're gonna get whatever you get when it comes to the three thousand yards. I'm just disappointed on the way this worked. You know, this is, I got set up, okay? I got set up at a road committee meeting. When I mentioned the price that I'd been given by Mr. Turkot compared to the price I'd gotten from Mr. Pepin, Mr. Mooney had an issue with the quality of the sand. It was putty sand. Well, I screened sand out of that same pit that he's gonna screen sand out of, okay? And I know what's in that pit. I screened out of there for six years for the town of Acton, and I know what it is. So we can do this twelve-year thing, but we're gonna scrape off the first four feet of sand to get good sand. I don't know. But at this point in time, you've got your bids, do whatever you want with your bids. I just made a recommendation that I don't believe the first two bids are legit.
I do believe all the bids are legit, and far as the best quality sand in town, my recommendation would be Pepin.
And Mr. Winchell, what is your recommendation?
Yep, Pepin's sand is great.
You're recommending Pepin for also, and you're recommending Pepin?
Pepin, and I believe Turkot's sand is just fine also.
Quality, what you're saying.
The best material is Pepin's.
Best materials.
Yeah, there's no doubt in my mind.
Okay, so you both agree on that?
I don't believe either, you know, either one of those is an issue. And also, each one of these people that I've talked to, okay, when I went out and did these four bids, I made sure when they gave me these bids, that we were gonna have a certain amount of material dropped in a certain period of time. I don't want to have my guys sitting down there putting sand up and waiting for material to drop, okay? So each one of these guys either promised me trailer dumps or tri-exle trucks, so many a day. So you can take your little bid, but the more time I sit down there, and Scott and I sit down there, the more money it's gonna cost.
If both road commissioners recommend Pepin, and they agree that that is the highest quality sand, and we have agreement from two of our road commissioners, I'm willing to go with their recommendation of the highest quality sand. It's not much higher than the bid price.
Well, first off, Mr. Winchell didn't recommend that we take Pepin's bid. What he said was that Pepin's had high-quality sand for what they're looking for. But we also know that Turk has quality sand also, all right? As far as the pit that the town took out of, I don't know, close to thirty years, that sand down there is poor quality. That's why they pulled out of there. That's why when Gerd and King was still road commissioner, and Robert Yeton, they started mixing some dirt out of King's pit with it, so get a little bit of coarseness to it. As far as the process, I am as guilty, I guess, as Mr. Winchell is. Before we got any prices, Mr. Mooney was here at a selectman's meeting, and I had asked him to come in and give the specs for the sand to Lorraine so that they could be advertised. It was a week later when he did that. It wasn't in a timely manner, so they could be advertised that week. Meanwhile, and Scott did say that there was only two people worthwhile getting sand from in town, and that was Turk and Pepin. They would give us our best prices. But we also have a policy that says we're supposed to put stuff out to bid.
To break?
They, what David said-
One second, I have to change tapes. Okay, continue.
What David did in the meantime was going out and getting bids, and we really haven't put this out to bid for very long. And David was right. Pepin did change his price this spring from what he did it for last fall. And the price that ended up being was higher than what I was told, but that was irrelevant. The job was already done, cost per yard. What happened here is wrong, and I think the only two bids that should be considered is Turkot's bid and Pepin's bid. That's the only fair thing to do, is selectmen and people not doing what they were asked to do, some people not understanding the procedures, that we need to take these two bids here into consideration. And under the circumstances, with these two bids, I make a recommendation that we accept Turk's sand and gravel's bid.
What are the two prices? What is Pepin's price?
Pepin's is six-forty.
Yes.
And Turk's is-
Six dollars.
Okay. Holly.
Hi. I want to, it seems like that things get kind of turned around, and it makes it, I've been watching from home, it seems like Scott seems to be the bad guy often. First of all, he is a contractor also in town. This is just a part-time job, as Dave said himself at the big meeting this year, and he's also a contractor. So he put that bid in as a contractor. Also, he didn't do anything with malice here. He has a right to put in a bid with another contractor in town with a pit that we have used, like he said, for many, many years. He didn't do anything wrong. He didn't know numbers, he wasn't playing around with numbers and doing things. And for you to seem, Dennis, that people aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, that reference to me seems like you're mentioning my husband again. When Scott has been doing his work, he has been working with the road committee, he's worked with them, he's been, he's brought them what they've needed, he's worked with the signs, he's gotten all the signs, he's put them up, he's taken care of his culverts himself. He is doing his job. So I just want to say that for the townspeople out there, that he doesn't get up here and talk and say what he does every week or whatever, but he is doing his job, and he's out there. And as a contractor, he was just putting in a bid as a contractor in town also, because that's his other, he also has Mooney excavation. He wasn't doing anything with a deceitful hand against the town. I just want that to be known.
I did not say that.
I'm not saying he used those words, but the reference-
Well, that's the accusations you were making. I did not say that. I did not say that Mr. Mooney did anything wrong.
Well, what you said to-
I did not say that he did anything illegal or deceitful. All I said was, the quality sand out of that pit is poor.
And you also said that what was done here tonight was wrong. And in reference to that-
And I also took, basically, the blame myself, along with Mr. Winchell. I never referenced Mr. Mooney at all.
Well, the reference is clear. I'm just, I just want to make it clear that-
There was no reference.
He didn't do anything, he wasn't trying to do anything over-
Mr. Chairman, I asked you to stop. It wasn't, you know, as far as, it was not anybody's, nobody was blaming, I must have heard it something different, because nobody was blaming Mr. Mooney for anything. That we just were talking about in general that this, there's a problem with this bidding system. And, you know, that's why I asked what happened at the road committee, figures were said. We didn't say it was anybody's fault, and Dennis did not say that. I didn't hear that, anyway. Mr. Roy.
Talking about the bids, I guess tonight, from what I'm hearing here, we're down to two people with quality sand, Pepin and Turkot's pit. And I don't know much about the different sands in these different pits, but we're talking about the one that he used for thirty years, and it's not up to par on what the sand is, should be. But there's one thing that I did hear tonight. We're talking about either Pepin's or Turk's pit. I think that when you mentioned Pepin raising the price from last year to this spring, I think that should be a mark against Pepin. And I think that this committee here should really consider Turk's pit, just because of that. I mean, he gave you a price last fall, and then in the spring it jumped up, from my understanding. Is that right?
That's right.
So if that's the case, if that was, if that was the case, then that's my recommendation.
Last year, we paid five dollars a yard last fall, and this year, this spring it was six-twenty-five. That's a price increase.
Well, but there was nothing on the bid saying that he had to deliver that material for the whole fiscal year.
That's because there was no contracts done in the past like there shall be this year.
And I'm just saying that, far as, I've lived in this town, if Judy Brazier's pit is, there's no quality down there, there's no quality in Turkot's, it's just as putty. There's been many, there's Milton, town of Milton has received sand out of Turkot's pit two years ago. They didn't get their material there last year. Town of Wakefield got their material out of Turkot's pit last year. They went to Pepin's pit this year and got their material. So far as the quality at Turkot's pit, it isn't there.
That's your opinion?
I'd like to correct him. The reason why these towns didn't get their material there was price. That was not, it wasn't the quality, it was the price of the material. Just the-
Mr. Conway.
I don't know the first thing about sand, but I want to do a point of order for you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Selectman Crockett put a motion on the table, and we're now discussing the second motion. You need to dispatch-
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a motion.
You need to dispatch her recommendation.
It wasn't a motion.
She didn't make a motion.
Thank you. It wasn't a motion, but-
I did.
Okay, I think, have we heard enough?
I think we should table it for the evening.
You want to table it?
I do.
We can't table it, because these road commissioners need to get this sand in. This is one of their things that they want it done right off. That's why we had it for now.
Then let's discuss rebidding. If the bidding process was tainted, shut it down, let it bid again.
It would take too long for rebidding.
The problem is with the rebidding process, the same problem we just came up with. When I went out and got my bids, when Scott and I decided that we were gonna go through the two guys in town here, okay? That's what we did. We already got those two bids. I went out and got four. Problem is, he didn't like the first bid, the bid that came in first. All of a sudden, now it was an issue. We started talking about quality, okay? If we do this again, we're gonna have the same problem. Everybody knows everybody's prices. That's why I said right off the bat, this bid was screwed up right from the start, and I was at fault of that, because I was naive. I agreed with Scott, and I got boned on it, okay? So now, this whole deal, we've gotta now make a judgment call here. Pepin charges five dollars a yard last year, he's got great sand. The issue I have is this spring, when he charges six-twenty-five, we didn't put it back out to bid. Now, we've got our bids, Scott says he didn't know the bids, well, then he wasn't listening very well at that road committee meeting, when he had a cow about the quality of Turkot's sand, okay? He knew the bid, just along with everybody else in that room that was in that, when I had given it to him, when he asked for that bid, okay? I knew right off the bat, after we had this meeting, that this was gonna be a big old mess, because obviously, Pepin knows, Pepin's gonna, because Scott said he was gonna call Pepin and straighten it out. This was kind of a big deal, it happened to be to him. So he knew his price, Turkot knew Pepin's price at this point in time, because now it's all public knowledge. Now Scott, Dick Waymouth, and everybody else in the world, except obviously the other two guys that bid didn't know, okay? But everybody else knew. That's why I said this bid was screwed right from the start. Now, at this point in time, like I said in my recommendations, these two pits in town that gave pretty decent numbers, I believe they're decent numbers, those are realistic numbers. Last year, Pepin's number at five dollars a yard, I mean, you can't buy in a pit for five dollars a yard, okay? I knew where we were getting there. We were getting roped in, and we did. He roped us in, and in the springtime, he nailed us for another dollar twenty-five a yard. Now, on these bids, does anything say? Because we asked for a three-thousand-yard bid, okay, right? But we're only gonna put two thousand to twenty-five hundred up, because we supposedly got fifteen, thousand to fifteen-hundred yards in there. We gotta add our salt and stuff, so we may not be able to get three thousand yards- We've got to add our salt and stuff, so we may not be able to get 3,000 yards in. We've got to make sure that we know when it comes around the end of February and we run out of sand, we can get our 500 yards out of a working pit, okay? We have to make sure we know we can get this material when we need it. Now, is Brazier's picking up the open all went along? I doubt it. So, okay, so what I'm doing here is I'm looking at the two bids that I had recommended do the winter sand for the local areas, okay, and our open year round. They gave us legit prices. Everybody knew everybody's prices. They both dropped in their prices, okay? And for a guy to come in, now as far as I know, I was quoted by the road commissioner this year saying if the price starts getting up over seven something dollars a yard, we'll start doing it ourselves, okay? And I asked him, how much does it cost, how much did it cost the town to act and do it themselves? It was seven something a yard coming out of the same pit. Now, I'm trying to figure out how they, now all of a sudden it costs the town seven something a yard to come out of the same pit. Now they're going to pull it out of there for seven eight, five eighty something.
Can I actually ask the question?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Larissa.
Just looking at Turk and Peppin.
Yep.
Are the six and the 640 the same figures that you were given that you-
Absolutely not.
So both of those figures have changed since the road committee meeting?
They both lowered because I'm sure that like anybody else, they knew they were already out there, okay? And when you're going out for a bid and you've given a number and it's exposed, you'd be a complete dummy to give the same number back.
May I ask what Turk's and Peppin's numbers were prior to today?
Turkart's price was 625 and Peppin's price was 660. And at the meeting, I had told the road committee that that price I got, because Scott seems, said that he was going to make a phone call to Dave Peppin and, you know, we were going to change that. And I had mentioned to him that, I had talked to them and they said, that's our price. We've got to make some money on this. So that price to me was not going to change. So the 625 and the 650, uh, 660, okay? Obviously it was going to change when you go back out to bid because they know someone's going to try to undercut them and that's what just happened.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Might I suggest that because if you choose not to take the lowest bid based on the quality of the sand, then you go with Peppin's bid, which has been by both road commissioners have assured us that Peppin's sand is the highest quality. If you're going to choose not to take the low bid-
I said they're both.
You're not taking the low bid.
Okay, they're both, yes.
Are based on quality of sand.
Scott.
The year prior to last year, it cost, we had to buy the sand off Judy's Braziers for two dollars a yard. We screened it, hauled it, mixed the salt with it and pushed it up in the barn. Got it all up in the barn for seven dollars and eighty-five cents. That's where the number come from. All, the whole process. We had to pay two dollars for it, screen it, haul it, mix it and get it up in the barn. That's where the seven dollars and eighty-five cents come from. So that's where, what Dave was trying to find.
Okay, we're going to cut off discussion. Let's-
I have a motion.
About trying to make a decision here. Thank you, everybody, for your input.
I have a motion for accepting Turk's bid for six dollars per yard.
Do I have a second?
I guess I really, I don't know anything about sand. If-
I mean, you know, basically the motion's on the table. We have two prices. They're both reputable. They both have decent sand. I would say go with the lower price. Would make sense. That's what I feel. Because I'm no sand expert either.
Can, okay. I feel bad that if the bid process has been, really has not gone well and Turk and Peppin are both aware of that and have both altered their bids as a result of it, I guess I really don't understand why we can't close it down, go out to bid a short week. Say you've got one week, guys.
The last week, even if you went with the prices that were there last week, Peppin was still higher than Turk.
I agree.
So it's the same thing.
The process has been, has been ruined. If redoing it is not going to help it. You know, believe me, if I thought it would, I'd say the same thing, but it, you know, we just, it's a mess. So we have to make a decision and stick with it.
Peppin's price was higher when the bid process hadn't been tainted.
And hopefully we can learn from this for the next time. But the motion's on the table.
I will second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Turkart gets the sand. All right, going on to number five, which is approval of policies, purchase guideline and cutting, cutting edges and bolts. So we have the policy that we need to establish that the town will provide road commissioners with cutting edges and bolts for personal winter equipment for the purpose of clearing snow on townways. The costs for the cutting edges and bolts to be paid out of the equipment account. It is a policy of the town of acting to furnish and or pay for cutting edges and bolts for road commissioners, winter plow trucks and equipment for the purpose of plowing on townways.
I make a motion to accept the policy as written.
Second.
All in favor?
And that's in my article, Tony. You've got the purchasing guide too.
Oh, it's the same one, okay. All right, so that's section one.
Tony, this is amended from the policy we already had adopted in 1996.
Just this piece?
This whole thing.
Oh, the whole thing's amended?
What part of the amendments? They're not-
This.
Have you seen this?
I have read it, but I was not, there were no strike throughs or underlines, so I wasn't sure. Is it the, are the underlines the all and the every?
What exactly was, do we know what exactly was changed there?
Well, the first one was, yeah, that, the first thing is the dollar amount that has to go out to bid.
Right.
The last one was $200. This one's 4,000, which is a lot more logical. I'm sorry, 200 to 1,000 needed a purchase order. Under 200 didn't need a purchase order. 1,000 had to go out to bid. So talking to the treasurer, because some law this has to do with her. I sat down with her the other day. I don't remember the rest of it. I think it was the day you were in Boston or whatever. And we went through this together and she's the one that scratched it up while we're talking it over and she rewrote it because I didn't have Lorraine or Linda do it because I figured it'd be easier for her to do it, which she's the one that did the scratching on it. Basically, it's the same other than the dollar amount and some of the procedures.
Do you want to table it and look at it further? Would you be more comfortable with that? We'll do it next week?
No, I read it. The policy makes sense.
Policy is fine?
Yes. Policy is, is clean.
Okay. The major change in it is this, I'll read the first section. This is the major change. The rest of it is kind of just a few odds and ends. But it's the policy of the town of acting to make maximum use of purchase orders in the purchase of goods and services. A purchase order will be obtained for all purchases by every department of the town. All requests for purchase orders over $4,000 will go out to bid. So that's the major change.
Everything else in it is basically the same procedures. Department heads and things like that. Convergence purchases and covers it all.
I will entertain a motion. Yes, you can.
When we bring in a consultant such as Southern Maine Regional, how are we handling that now? Because this, the amount of money, the amount of money basically allocated by warrant is basically for that. Are we going to have to have a purchase order every time we bring in a consultant?
Not every time, John. Departments should have some idea, especially ongoing departments, on approximately how much money they're going to be spending in understanding that isn't going to be right to the dollar amount. But in the beginning of the fiscal year, you would set up a purchase order with that vendor, whoever and whoever it might be. And you get a purchase order for that amount. And if you saw as the year progressed that you weren't going to have enough money in there and you didn't still have enough money in your account, you would get a new purchase order from the treasurer.
Very good.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the policy as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Send it to Dan.
Doug does it. Doug does it today. Yeah.
They're both them.
Yes.
Okay, next we have Mr. Ledoux to come up to speak about the transfer station.
A few weeks ago, I was up here talking about closing one of the days at the transfer station, which would be Monday, and extending the other two days to 10-hour days. After getting some pricing on lighting to keep everything bright up there so that we could stay open longer. That was a pretty good chunk of change. And then getting a lot of feedback from residents along with the workers up there. And now opted to not go with that plan and be open the three days. Monday and Wednesday would be a little shorter of a day. Mondays, the hours would be eight to two. And then on Wednesday, we'd open a little later and go 10 to four. And then Saturdays would remain the same, eight to four. So that would cut back on the amount of hours worked each week and will balance the budget that I have to work with and-
And you would have to be laid off.
Right. Everybody gets to keep their job.
It's the same hour cut as before.
Same hour cut, right. And we're going to have six-hour days instead of 10 and-
Sounds like a good compromise.
Yes, it does.
You know, I met with the warrant and finance a little bit Monday on some other issues in the future. And we talked about this some and they backed this idea. So everybody was happy with that and been getting some feedback from some residents already. But I thought it'd be wise to come up and talk about it again tonight. And this seems to get watched a lot because made, made quite a, made for a lot of noise there after coming up a few weeks ago, so.
I've got a question. I've had a couple of residents ask me about the bailers. When I was on the warrant finance committee last year, you did mention the bailers and what you thought you could find them used for. We went to the transfer station this past weekend and clear plastics are no longer being able to be taken. What, if you don't mind, if you can remember what you were able to find for used prices last year for bailers?
We had, I was looking at new bailers and there weren't any used ones available at the time and I could trade in the compactor that we have right now. And we were looking at 10.5 apiece with the trade. It knocked some off, but we're really getting hit pretty hard and the compactor is worth a lot more. I look at things, if I can't pay for it in four years, I kind of lean back off from that. Idea of going that direction for right now. You know, I had requested 278 for my budget and it went to the floor at 265. So there's, definitely wasn't going to see money for bailers this year. There is, there is some money to be made, but it's almost, you know, that eighth, ninth year that you would actually make the money back on the machinery. So it makes it not so feasible right now. It's more kind of watch the market. See what, see if, as plastics continue to grow on the recycling end as far as the income and stuff, then we reassess it at a later point.
Okay.
One other thing, there was a question somewhere that somebody had about the other number plastics. We take one and two right now.
One and two.
The, we, we switched to-
We were taking one through seven, but it ended up being, we were, it was costing us money at that point. I was getting no revenue for plastics. By taking one and two, I can, we actually get credits and stuff like that.
The other one is three to what? What's the other?
Three, three to seven.
Three to seven. So as I understood it, the market for three to seven is, it doesn't pay off.
Is minimal unless it's bailed. In a bailed form, not sure what the weight is, but it pays $150 a ton at that point.
See, that's the, that's the point of people questioning, why don't we have the bailers to do that?
Right. And how much of that makes a ton? How, you know, you're going to, two, maybe three bales? You know, and I look at what tonnage overall leaves there for plastics. We don't produce enough plastic at this point to get the tonnage that would justify that, that revenue coming in each year.
That makes sense.
So.
Steve, just for clarification, this idea of doing what you're doing was something that you came to the selectmen with?
Yes, that's correct.
The last time, regardless of what some idiots or cowards or whatever out in the community sent out a letter about Dennis Long, isn't it true also that you came to us and with that proposal and we said, whatever you think will work, Steve, and if it doesn't work, we'll change it and try something different?
Right, that's correct.
As far as I'm concerned, this proposal you have tonight is the same thing. We can try it.
Correct, right.
And if it doesn't work, we can change it down the road.
And I think, you know, we have to do something. The money isn't there to continue throughout the year. So we have to start, start now. And, you know, I had the proposal of the 10-hour days. I thought that would be great. But when I got the, you know, the price of the lighting and then a lot of people weren't happy and I said, well, you know, we've got to revisit this and try something different and still maintain the cutbacks.
So it wasn't Dennis Long attacking senior citizens like these clowns that wrote this letter said, that didn't have the guts to sign it? But on that note, which I wanted to speak on this since we're on it as the chairman, someone sends a letter out and doesn't sign it, I think they're a coward. They won't come up here and speak. Secondly, if anybody believes it without asking this board or the person it's about, that's another problem I have. So these letters circulating around, I think we're going to try to maybe address, I don't even waste the time to address the other one that's out there. It's ridiculous. All right, we don't even have to.
It's stupid.
I just wanted to say that, you know, to the public. If there's a question, if you have a rumor, come and ask one of the selectmen about it and we'll give you the answer, please. And don't believe all of this baloney out there. It's just right now there's a movement to discredit Dennis Long because he's the next one going up for election. And then the year after that, it'll be for me. And then the year after that, it'll be for the rest of it and it continues. It's all politics. Sorry, I just had to interject that.
Okay.
I like this proposal better. This is, I think, it's, you know, fortunately for the employees, it's more of a disjointed week and that is too bad. But if we can stay open those three days, this, and still meet the budget requirements, this seems like a much better choice.
And then as this goes for a few months, then come the first of the year, I want to put out something, a little survey thing to see if people are interested in longer hours. We'll try that in warmer weather when we have daylight and see if there's people, enough people that are interested in that. You know, if I had 100 people that were interested in staying open an extra hour, then, you know, we'd look at doing a longer day during the week, either a Monday or a Wednesday. But I figured I'd put a survey out there and see if there's a need for that, so.
Thank you. All right.
Lorraine, you get that advertised in the paper.
We've got to do it again, but-
And we'll have town clerk put it on the website, the changes and hopefully this will make people a little happier.
We'll put it on Facebook.
Put it on Facebook, that's right. How many, how many fans do we have?
I think like 27?
27 fans.
Something like that. We're getting there. Slow and steady.
Who was the first fan?
Me.
Oh, okay.
I think you were number two.
I was number two. Okay, going on to number seven, waiving the fee for the maps for Mossum Lake Association.
I don't even know, this is about him too.
What's that about?
Well, we'll have Lorraine explain that. She could probably get a-
Mossum Lake Association is doing a project and Jennifer has made them a disc and they need a set of maps to go with it. Shapley waived the fees. They didn't charge them. We charged $75 for a set of maps. And this is what we want to know, are you willing to waive the fees for the association? Shapley waived the fees and if you won't waive the fees, they will pay the fee.
What is the fee to cover? Just the cost of the printing of the maps?
The cost of the maps, right.
And Mossum Lake Association is a nonprofit association.
Right.
Well, myself personally, I'm not for waiving the fees, but I'm not going to...
Is this something that we potentially are going to see from every lake association?
Good question, it's a good question.
Wouldn't surprise me, Mr. Austin.
Then you're looking a lot more than $75.
No, it's a good point that if we do it for one, we gotta do them for all.
What sort of project are they doing?
I can't tell you because Jennifer's the one that talked about it. I only made the maps.
And how many pages are these maps? Is it many, many, many pages of map?
Well, it's the, what if I got in the 100th, we go up to 53 or 54, about 100 maps.
Mr. Roy.
I would like to say, Lorraine, a few years ago, when I was in charge of the ATV and snowmobile club, you did not waive the fees for me.
The town's policy in the past has always been to work with the associations and the groups and so forth. It isn't, the cost of having the maps made is a cost for the paper and the copy machine. But in the past, as Roger said, we have always accommodated these people because it's beneficial. And you get it back in your tax money and so forth, so...
Actually, Roger said you didn't accommodate him.
I didn't accommodate him. Oh, I thought he said I did.
No, he said you didn't.
That's because it was you.
We have, up until this point, we have worked with quite a few of the road associations and given them the maps of their roads and the printout of the map and lines for their roads.
May I add that Shapley did that, for it will be a fee, see that?
Must be you, because it was you asking, I think.
Probably, that's what it was.
Anyway, I make a motion that we do not waive the fees.
I'll second it. All in favor? They must pay the fee. Okay, number eight, Mike Conway's appeal.
You didn't want to hear our conversation?
Yeah, we have, I think we have this figured out, so if we...
Well, I drove over two hours to get here. I gotta get up at 3:00 o'clock in the morning and drive back up to Brown's of Vermont, so I definitely want to say something.
All right, well, listen to what we have to say first, and then we'll, you wanna go first?
No, let him go. We'll see what he has to say. Well, I just wanted to review with all three of you the process that I've been through. In the spring, in the fall of '07, I hired a forester to review all my property so I could put my land into tree growth. That work was completed in the spring of '08. In June of '08, I had the plan written up so that I could submit it. I submitted my plan to the town. Lorraine was kind enough to point out that my forester had signed the wrong section. He had signed, I believe, section two, and I apologize for not having any documentation with me because I literally came straight from Vermont. When I got my tax bill, I found out that I did not receive tree growth. When I came up to question why I did not receive tree growth, I was told that they couldn't even find my original application. They then found a copy of an application that was not, did not have the second signature on it. So when I pointed out to them that I had a copy from the piece, because I had to take the Tuesday off from work, which was March 30th, so that I would be in under the deadline, I took, I came up here, got the original, drove to my forester's office, had him sign it, drove back here, and submitted it. They could not find that. So I went home, and I got a copy of that, and they said, well, you're too bad. The other thing I could not find, or they could not produce for me here at Town Hall, was even the original rejection. It was almost as if, well, the form got lost and no one really looked at it. So, and I said, all right, you know, clerical errors happen. I filled in a request for review, I guess is the, I'm not sure the exact terminology. That was done, and I received a phone call from Linda telling me that a letter was coming out. I actually called, Linda left her a message saying, you know, hey, could you just give me an update where we stand? She called me back, told me that I had been rejected again, this time because they could not prove that I actually got it in before April 1st deadline. And I said, well, I can't prove that until you show me the original document, because, you know, I'm sure she stamps in received or whatever. She said, well, you're gonna have to take that up with Joe. She was kind enough to give me Joe Lasai's phone number. I called Joe. Joe said to me, he's pretty sure that I did it, but he has to follow the letter of the law, gave me a number to call in Augusta, and I believe it was Domain Revenue Service, but it was a specific branch in that that dealt with tree growth. I called them, and I told the woman what had happened, and she said to me, well, you know, you do have the right to bring your matter to your Board of Selectmen and see what they say. You know, the intent is clear, you have been working at it, you made the efforts. I will point out, when I did come in on the 30th, I know I spoke to many people in here, and I made jokes about the fact that it probably wouldn't be approved because I had just left being a selectman, which in hindsight was good because a lot of people remember me making those jokes. So I then, immediately after hanging up with Augusta, I reached selectman Long here in the office. He was kind enough to give me Mr. Cogliano's cellphone and Ms. Crockett's cellphone number, called both of you requesting time. I was then, I believe this morning, you said that you would be willing to put me on today. I canceled my 5:00 appointment and drove back here to be here. I didn't think it would be this difficult to put my property in tree growth. You know, I did spend the money, I did pay attention to Tom Cashin when he sat up here with his fancy map, saying how the town is gonna be overpopulized. I have a fairly sizable piece of property, not a big one, but it would be nice to stay open space. And I'm hoping that the Board of Selectmen, I saw her on the agenda, I'm going to the bar.
There's a question mark there.
Well, I'm not sure where the bar is and who's paying, but... I, no, I just want you to know, I believe I said this to all three of you, win, lose, or draw, that's fine. I do have, I did, I was given, I was told my rights by the folks in Augusta what the process is. This is the easiest process, is to come to you three first. If it should be denied, I can then go to the county commissioners. I will say that the woman laughed when I said that I, you know, unless you've found it recently, you can't find my original, you know, I'm asking you not to penalize me because of a clerical error. I think it's fairly obvious that I was in here on time, I did all the legwork. Again, the reason why I know I was here on the 30th, because I took the day off of work, and just trying to do the right thing, that's all.
Is it our turn now?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If, if my understanding is correct from the Domain Revenue Service, if we as a board feel that the intent was there to put it into tree growth, then we can in fact say, okay, this is going to be reflected into last year. The application that we received, the date prepared, according to the mic reader, the forester that did the report, was dated June 24th of '08. That's clearly ahead of the April 1st '09 deadline. It is clear that the intent was to put this property in tree growth. I would make a motion that we allow this property to be considered tree growth for year '09, '10.
Now, we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, what do you want to do?
Can I second it?
No.
No? I'll second it. All in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Thank you all for your time very much.
Okay, going to number nine, which is discussion of a number of areas.
Before we move on...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Conway?
Yep.
I would like to publicly explain why I did that. No, I need to, because as you know, being a former selectman, and the jokes around town about yours and my friendship, while you was in selectmen, and me trying to fill your shoes, and you being a Dennis Long wannabe, and me being a Mike Conway wannabe...
I was here first.
I figured, I figured, as you know how it is to end up on the front page of a newspaper for really arbitrarily being there, I didn't want to put myself in that position or you. So that's why I did that.
That's not a problem, Dennis. I'll just stop believing all those letters.
Okay. Not a problem. I hear they showed on stamps, by the way.
Okay, let's, we get some things to discuss, let's get these discussed in an efficient manner. First one is the policy, the bid for contracted work minimum price. I thought we just did that.
No. I tossed this on. I have been looking to see if we have a policy onto, as to when for contracted work, not, and it's possible that the policy, that was for purchase orders though, so that's for all departments.
No, that was for all, not just purchase orders. That's a purchasing policy for all the expenditures.
Everything. I think we kinda covered it, I think.
Okay, so $4,000 is the minimum?
$4,000, and we'll...
Okay.
Okay. And the second one is, we just want to have a little discussion on the dissolution of the cable committee. It says replace with the Board of Trustees. The cable committee, when it was established, is established to, as we do many committees, to get things rolling. Their job was to get this thing up and running, find out what has to be done and so forth. And then eventually, the cable committee gets dissolved, and we go to making the cable TV station a department of the town. The monies that come in from the contract that was done with the cable, there's also laws governing this money, has to go to the cable TV situation. We knew of this, that this had to come eventually. I don't know if we ever publicly discussed it before, but eventually it becomes a department of the town, and we pay people to run it, as well as use volunteers, because it's just too much work to run a cable TV station without doing that. The amount of work that's involved is incredible, and this cable committee, again, we commend them every week. They've done such a tremendous job to be able to get this up and running. It is very complicated. They've been putting in huge amount of hours every week, which I, I mean, I just can't believe they do. So what's up for, the first time we're discussing this, is when we want to dissolve this cable committee, and how we want to set it up to become a department of the town and so forth. So. You like to?
No, I was in favor of waiting on this discussion.
Oh, okay.
But...
You wanted, you wanted...
I just wanted, I just said tonight to the other selectmen that this is something we're gonna be looking at, and I just wanted it to be out in the community, so if they have any thoughts, positive or negative, before we follow through with this, we welcome your opinion.
Okay. So it's out there.
Another shout out, that anyone in the community that's interested in becoming involved in learning how to do the taping, or the editing, or so forth, please come forward because we need more volunteers.
Absolutely. And just as a note that, you know, my son's here operating the camera, he's doing this as a volunteer for community, the community service requirements that they have for the high school, which is a great thing. He's learning, he loves it, he's learning a lot, so that's why he's doing it. But we need, this committee has gone way above and beyond. They may have edged out the road committee in time, I don't know. It's like a contest of who's putting in more time between the road committee and the cable committee, it's unbelievable.
I don't think that's a contest, I think they already won.
I think they did. So anyway, if any, we would like, if anybody has any ideas or comments on this, please let us know. Okay, and the phone price quotes. We have three quotes for additional phone lines. We need to put one into the cable studio, and we want to put one emergency line in the town hall meeting room, which is gonna be, there was situations where there was an emergency and nobody had a cellphone, and there was no, the town officers were closed, and nobody could make a call for this emergency, which was kinda strange. And, you know, payphones are kind of obsolete now, so we're looking to put a phone in, which was Luisa's very good idea, that just would be able to call out locally and 911. So we have that emergency phone here. So we have a BCN Telecom. Emergency only would be $37.50 a month, including taxes. The studio line would be $29.50 a month plus tax, and three cents per minute for long distance. Average town hall line with unlimited is $45.27. So you could get one for $45.27 for unlimited, I assume, right?
I would assume it is.
The installation is $62 per line, hook up to the pole only. Town would have to run it from the pole to the jack. That's BCN. Verizon, emergency only would be $42 a month in unlimited long distance. For emergency, they give you unlimited long distance.
Amazing.
So really, it's just a regular line with unlimited, you know? And this line two, studio business line, is $76 per month with unlimited long distance. So we, okay, so that's unlimited. $56 per line to the pole, only $120 per hour to the jacks by Verizon, or town can hire a private contractor. What's this name, Kim Dunlap, that comes into play here?
That's Dunlap, that's a vendor that we use for the, that's a telecommunications...
Oh, okay, that somebody could come in and do it privately for us to run the line. Okay, then we have MetroCast. Emergency only is not offered, as there is no modem to plug in into. The studio phone would be $53 a month at unlimited long distance. No installation is needed on the studio line for MetroCast, nor to concern with MetroCast as if the cable goes down, the phone service will not work. Spoke to the town's wiring contractor, Ken Dunlap, estimated $250 to run both lines from the pole, including cable to the specified location within the building. That's it.
I just have one thing about the studio phone.
Yes, Carol.
We really need the unlimited long distance in there, else it's gonna get expensive. And the MetroCast thing, I can use my cellphone if the cable went down, I just don't want to use it to call Scott every time I'm in the studio and run up all my minutes.
Well, no, the cellphone wasn't for you guys, that wasn't speaking about you guys.
No, but I'm saying, for the studio, if the cable went down and I need to call MetroCast and the cable phones down, I can call them with my cellphone, if that's the option you decide. But I definitely, we need the unlimited long distance in the studio.
Okay.
If I may, I'm gonna ask a question that Steve may have to answer. While you're discussing this, it made me think of, we had a heart attack at the transfer station in the spring, and because of their phones are tied through this building, dispatch dispatched us here. And I know we were, has that been remedied? Do we know?
No.
Because that's something, you may want to look at that, because if this place is closed and that happens, I actually immediately got on the cellphone, called up here, and said, is someone having a heart attack there while I was en route? They said, no. Because I was aware of what was, their lines came through here, I then got dispatch on the radio and said, we need to go to the transfer station, not town hall. So if you're looking at that, that is a situation that does need to be remedied, because if that, if something happens on a Saturday afternoon and there's nobody here, dispatch is gonna say 35H Road and send us here with the ambulance and the fire trucks, not there. And any second can cause someone's life.
Absolutely.
So would you get another quote to get you separated?
Just something, something to look at that.
Again, like, this is all tied in because of the contract that the town...
Correct.
Signed with BCN back a few years ago. And we're tied into that contract.
For quite a significant, that was before my time, and it goes probably after all your time.
Yeah, I think it's another year, might be this spring or something. And that's definitely something we need to change.
I just wanted to mention it because it popped into my head while you were talking about emergency numbers, and I wasn't sure if that had been rectified.
Okay.
I would make a motion to go with BCN. It's our current provider, it's the lowest bid for both the emergency line and the unlimited long distance, and it just seems to make the most sense.
Well, no, this is not unlimited long distance.
It is at the $45.27.
Oh, 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 right, right, okay.
And it's still lower than any others.
All right, well, because we have everything else with BCN, but I don't know, what do you think, Mr. Long?
Well, my, my problem with it, as far as the TV room, the money for that would come out of the money we receive from MetroCast, so that money would be covered. The problem I have with the other line, and I understand about... The problem I have with the other line, and I understand about the emergencies, but this is, uh, forty-five twenty-seven, uh, a month, uh...
No, the emergency's thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty-seven fifty?
Yeah.
All right, sorry, I got it backwards. Is, with some of the other, um, problems we've come up with that have to be corrected. I'm not so sure that we have the money for that, but...
Have we, um, we don't have to make a decision right now. I think we, that's a good point. We, we have to look at our, uh, our telephone budget and see where, where that's at.
We certainly can, but, or we can ask them for a payphone if we want to. But I think that our board members that are here at night, when the office is locked down, they should have some form of telephone available to them if they need to call. We, we had Mr. Trafton fall on the ice and, and cracked his head open and we could not call an ambulance. We had to drive away from the building to call an ambulance and-
A payphone is gonna cost us also.
Okay.
You know what I mean? They'll charge you a monthly fee and those are pretty much obsolete now. It's, they're really expensive, but...
Down to the school, we had the payphone and then the school got rid of it. They was paying seventy-five dollars a month for the phone.
Yeah.
And, uh, the telephone company was keeping, uh, a little bit of money that was put into it.
The only, uh, the only concern I would have is that, you know, thirty-seven fifty, um, a month, do we have that in the budget to cover it? So let's make an extra check on that. I mean, I, I agree, we do need it and I think it's a very good thing to have. And let's make, just double-check that before we make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay? We'll check it out and see. Yes?
I, I understand you want to double-check that, but, um, I have to agree with Larissa. It's, it's really unfair for those of us that are here till nine, ten o'clock at night by ourselves not to have any way to call out. And whether the, if the money's not in the budget, you, you really need to find it in the budget.
Well, that's what we have to make sure-
You can't wait until the next year.
We have to make sure that we can find it and we'll be okay. Because we cannot go over budget. Okay, so we'll just hold that for now and take another investigation on it and then we'll make a decision. That's easy enough. Okay, number ten is outdoor lights for the Town Hall. I have that. We have got estimate, um, to really do the outside correctly. This is another safety issue. The lighting is not very good out there. So we have an estimate from Wakita Electric, which Mr. Ken Paul got together with them and, um, explained the situation. And this would be to add new lighting for parking areas, two-hundred-and-fifty watt metal halide wall packs with time clock and photo cells. There'd be, there'd be seven of them to properly safely, if you even look out there right now, there's no light in, in all types of areas out there. At four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents each. This comes to two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars and six cents to properly light up the outside of the town.
Since it's been an issue before, will they be timed so that they are shut down?
Yes. Yes, they will have, uh, they're actually on photo cells anyway, but they're also on timers also, so it's kind of a double, uh, situation. So... We have Mr. Moore.
Have you realized the, uh, the cost to run southern two-hundred-and-fifty watt?
Yes, he's very energy efficient, energy efficient.
I realize you're sending it.
And we're looking at getting a reimbursement, uh, hopefully from, uh, Efficiency Maine, uh, for installing these type of lights.
No, but I'm talking maintenance, the cost to, to, uh-
The light bulb's life expectancy is seven years, John.
No, no, I'm talking the, the cost per year of running-
Oh, for a light, of running them?
Seven times two-hundred-and-fifty watts.
Again, it's the same type of thing as with this emergency phone, okay?
No, I realize that.
Yeah, we need to do it. We need to put it around-
Do you need two-hundred-and-fifty watts? That's an awful lot of light.
We have to light it up. I mean, it's really-
I realize that, but two-hundred-and-fifty watts is an awful lot of light.
Well, this is what was recommended by Ken Paul in the discussion with the electric company, so...
It's gonna cost you a lot more money to run it rather than, probably cost you more to run it than to install it.
Do we need a motion on this? Do we have additional, uh-
You guys want one?
Isn't there, that's-
Mr. Hudson, any additional comment, please?
Are those the same type of lights that are on the ambulance building?
I believe basically, yes.
Yeah, flush type?
Yes.
Yeah.
Same setup, same setup.
The cost to run those is-
Minimal.
Oh, absolutely.
And there is a, there is a rebate that's given by the, by the government. We have to look into, the, the, the electric company knows this for particular type of light bulbs that they give us a, uh, what was that, uh? You know, for the cost efficiency. These are really cost-efficient bulbs and so forth, so... I mean, do we need a motion for this?
Isn't Ken Paul just using a purchase order to go ahead with this?
I believe so. Once we okay it, you know?
Yeah, if that's what you want to do. We haven't decided that. I just wanted-
I think it's fine.
Bring it to the public to know what, to say they know what we're doing.
I think it's fine. Okay, so we don't have to make a motion on it, but I think we're gonna do it.
We're gonna-
We're gonna do it, but we don't need a, we don't need a motion.
You're gonna what?
Say yes. Go ahead, Ken. Get those lights done.
Put Ken to go ahead for that.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
No.
No, it isn't a motion.
You just announce it, go ahead.
Just announce that we're doing it.
All right, okay. All right, announcements. Public hearing on October eighth at seven PM. Selectmen's meeting is at six PM. And the, uh, the meeting with Fire Chief Ed Walsh Friday morning at ten AM. That's tomorrow?
Well, Ed hasn't said unless-
Can you be here, Mr. Ed, tomorrow? Okay. All right, meeting with you.
And Dennis, uh, Dennis told me he wanted the road commissioners there and I called both road commissioners and they'll be there.
All right.
I know, they have some concerns. They want to talk to you about it with the nine-one-one and whatever.
I'd like to hear from, um, either Mr. Vannell or the Stanton's. How did our public hearing go downstairs?
Heavenly, uh, heavenly, uh, what do you call it?
Attended?
Attended, yes.
Heavenly attended.
Very busy.
Did we, did we pass?
A permit, a condition used permit was granted. What happens next is up to the town.
Okay. So we have a permit?
Okay.
So that, does that mean that we, so is the proper protocol now, in order for Mr. Stanton to go ahead with his donation, do we need to put it on our agenda again to, to say-
We already, we already-
We're already accepted.
Right, so, Mr. Stanton, when do you think that you could begin work? Well, clearly, as it is a donation, do not, you know, injure your own business in doing so, but, um, if you want to just let us know when you think you might be out there and, did Mr. Rumah ever get a chance to look at those trees?
Well, that's an interesting thing, that, that we were gonna rip out these bushes that are in front of the sign because blocking the sign, but we found out that these are special bushes that were donated years ago by the, by, um, the Rumahs and were planted by the Boy Scouts or something like that. And so now I don't know what to do with them.
Well, I thought they'd chop them down to size. They're, they're obstructing.
They're obstructing the size.
Unfortunately, they're very leggy, so if we prune them, they'll just look ratty, which Mr. Rumah agreed, so he was thinking about maybe transplanting them.
He said he may just-
Well, but that would, would that be an insult to the original donation?
If Mr. Rumah does it, no, because he's the one who made the donation.
Ah.
They're out of luck.
Yes, Mr. Conway.
Oh, maybe the Boy Scouts could move them. They could get their own plaque, or the Girl Scouts.
Well, the bushes aren't in your way anyway, so...
We'll deal with the bushes another time.
We'll deal with the bushes. Okay. Entertained a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
That's terrible. A lot of luck.
It's terrible.